The resolution appoints, it says in the resolution who the trustees are. Yeah, it says insert trustee's name Scott and then the alternate is Aaron.
Not our committee. All right, are you guys ready? Okay, let's call it order this Tuesday, August 12th, meeting of the Appointment and Alignment Committee. First up, we've got public comment. If anyone would care to make a comment from the public. I'm getting head shakes in the negative direction. All right, public is headed out. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda? All in favor say aye. Aye. All right, consent resolutions. Suggested motion is to approve the minutes from the July 15, 2025 Appointment and Alignment Committee meeting. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All right, motion carries. Agenda and action item requests. Got a little bit of a wordsmithing on this one, just because it's a new thing for us. But the suggested motion is to place into nomination and recommend to the board chairperson the name of, I'm just going to read the names just for the record, and then we will select, we will recommend one individual to fill the Housing Commission member vacancy beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2030. So I'll read the names, Joseph Alfonso, Andrea, excuse me, Andrew, Ryan Strahlers, I can't believe I walked into doing this, Jack Vandermeulen, Kenneth Bruin, Christopher Bennett, Calvin Brinks, Sharon Kozak, Christopher Kleynions, Rebecca Patrick, Josh Ribbons, Nathan Slower, Orlando Estrada. Can't really make a motion when I've heard them all off, can we? Would anyone care to make a motion to appoint one of these, to recommend one of these individuals to chair, to the chairman of the board for appointment to the Housing Commission?
I think we still need to make a motion to recommend all of them.
Okay.
So I think we probably vote on this now and then we discuss the recommendation. We're placing all of these names into nomination.
And then we're going to recommend one individual.
John chooses one off the list. I'm procedurally, I would assume that'd be the correct way to do it.
I'll second the motion to place them into nomination.
There we go.
That first part?
Yeah, I like that.
All right, I move that. Excellent, I think we should vote on that.
And then we should vote on that, and then from there we'll select one to recommend. Does that work? No, you're.
Into it, this would be the time for discussion, and then when we get to the point of voting, we will simply state the person's name that we would like to recommend.
I didn't know all of them needed to.
You just stated all of them, that would be following typical protocol.
Okay, I think that makes sense as well. We could roll it into one motion. Okay, so discussion about the applicants then, now that we have a motion on the table. Would anyone care to make comment? Doug?
Just a couple of quick comments. Number one, I believe Mr. Estrada did not stay.
Correct.
Maybe something like one.
They would discuss this at various times in the past, and the fact that they're still nominated.
Okay, and the second one is, as Peter pointed out several times during this process, the actual term ends December 31, 2025. This person is filling out a vacancy in current term, but each person was asked who the one was seconded by. I think we all said yes, so there's a bit of a technical problem there that I don't know about.
Yeah, go ahead. I've got a comment.
You know, John, if someone had just been in the process, we have made a separate little asterisk there, that is not eligible, and that's, that's how it's, he just made sure, the thing that we eliminated last time.
I thought it was a very long discussion.
Not having comments.
That Orlando interviewed or not, eligibility. I mean, we could legitimately pick anybody else who was interviewed.
Well, if you went back to past notes, for example, what we agreed, at least what we had decided on, the only thing that we had changed was we didn't put into the meeting minutes, did not show, because we felt like that was not needed to be relevant, but we still had on there, not eligible.
Okay, I don't know that he has battled. I mean.
Well, in my perspective, our policy would state that they go through a process, and because he didn't go through the process, at this point in time, he's not eligible to be considered.
I think here's my suggestion on that. Because this particular appointment is a recommendation, it's a little bit different. And technically speaking, anybody is eligible, regardless of whether they interviewed because of the nature of this appointment. But you guys bring up a good point, and there's a continuing, I'd say, issue regarding how we address absences from interviews. And I'd be happy to add that as an agenda item to one of our future meetings, maybe our next one, because we're going to get into appointments, where we, you know, make sure we're all on the same page on what that policy is. Is that fair? I get it, Doug.
But if you don't, if there's a candidate, and Orlando did apply, then I think that he's definitely eligible.
I agree. I'm going to add it as a discussion item on a future agenda. We're going to leave Orlando in there right now, just to address your current question.
Okay.
Okay, so back to you, Ron, as far as we'll need to clean up the final motion that we make, and we may have an amended emotion that includes this appointment to a certain period of time. That's beyond the December 31. Oh, it does say December 31, 2030 on it.
It does, but it doesn't break it down into two actual terms. This person is serving, what, three or four months of a current term that is vacant, and then five years, starting January 1, 2026.
Given that it's a recommendation, oh, we're live. Given that it's a recommendation, I wouldn't think it would matter. We'd still be recommending that that person serve both terms. But yes, I think, I agree, it's John's to appoint technically twice, or I suppose you could appoint him at the same time, but I don't know if it needs to be two separate recommendations.
No, no, I wasn't saying that. I'm just saying to clear up the language, so the full board understands what the term actually is.
True.
This doesn't go to the full board. This is the last time we see this.
Right. It just goes right to John.
Right.
Yeah.
But we will make sure. We will make sure John knows.
Okay.
There's nothing that prevented us from doing a little bit longer of a term in state statute, correct?
I don't think the statute really addresses that.
Okay.
I mean, the only thing I could think of that might cause a problem is if this person that is selected doesn't show up for the rest of the year, and really doesn't be the qualifications to serve, then would you want them to have another five years after that? But that can be addressed other ways, probably.
That would be similar to anyone else currently serving too, so.
Will John technically reappoint them again in December? That's probably the cleanest way to do it.
Technical about it, he would probably have to do that.
Okay, well, I think that's.
So you can, you know, we could tell him this is a recommendation to our chairperson to appoint now, and then appoint again in December, but then we need to remind him to do that some way or another at the end of.
I feel like we can do this.
That would be the completely perfect way of doing it, I think.
All right, if you say that's perfect, we can do it the perfect way. But what should our recommended motion be then? Because right now, the recommended motion is through 2030. So how would you like us to change it, Ron? I guess so that it's more perfect. We'll be happy to amend it. You want a minute to wordsmith how it should go while we discuss the candidates? All right, we'll give you a minute there. Does anybody have any comments on the candidate?
Yes, I definitely have.
Yeah, go for it, Doug.
Because we have great candidates, right?
Yes.
And I think those of us who were in the interview, we really remarked on the fact that we have great candidates. I, you know, we didn't get a chance to interview with Mr. Estrada, but everybody else we did interview with, I was impressed with each individual candidate for different reasons, right? We have folks who have professional backgrounds, folks who don't necessarily have those professional backgrounds, but have, you know, strong interest and strong skillsets that could help the Housing Commission. And, you know, I know we talked about the issue of having a larger Housing Commission someday, and, you know, the fact that we have such great applicants kind of underlies the fact that we have potential for having that larger commission, and, you know, I realize we're not quite there yet. But for me, I might like to respect the depth of these candidates, by perhaps recommending a number of them to John. I just want to see what folks say about that.
Okay, good comment there. We'll pop over to Jordan. Yeah.
I want to echo what you said. I think almost every single person that applied, I think, had strengths, and in a, in a perfect world could serve. I'm very encouraged, actually, by the number of people who have this kind of technical expertise and are also interested in tackling housing issues. So I want to say kudos to everybody who applied. I'm not opposed to recommending two or three, and letting him decide. You know, I think that would be appropriate. I've got, yeah, I think there's enough qualified, strong candidates here that we can easily find two or three that would be an asset.
So before you go, Doug, just give Allison a minute to chime in on that one and have a turn to.
So I didn't have an opportunity to partake in the interviews due to a prior scheduled doctor appointment, but in listening to some of your feedback, as well as going through the various applications and resumes, and as well as listening to the current people who sit on the Housing Commission, as well as talking to Paul Sacks, I do believe that we had a really great pool of candidates to select from. I was really happy, pleased to see the caliber that came forward, and yeah, I have, I have probably two, about two that I would probably recommend to John at this point in time. But I also take you guys' thoughts into perspective, as I didn't get to hear the verbal part of it.
Perfect. And then on that thought, Doug, just to wrap it up, and then we'll punt back over to you.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think three is a good number. I mean, I can break these out by like, folks have professional backgrounds, and folks who don't, not necessarily immediately involved in the housing space, but are community members with a strong skillset. I have three names that I would like to put in, and maybe adjust the motion then to recommend three different candidates to fill one vacancy, and that, for me, ending in 2025 as opposed to the 30, because we can't have a five and a half year term according to state statute.
We'll get Ron to wordsmith how that motion should be. But so you have three. I'm comfortable with two at the moment, but let's hear your three, and we'll see if we get.
Sure, so two folks with professional background. I like Jack Vandermeulen, but Christopher Bennett and Christopher Kleynions both are in the housing space currently. Rebecca Patrick doesn't have direct housing experience, neither do I. I'm on the Housing Commission, but deep interest, as well as a strong skillset. So for me, Christopher Bennett, Christopher Kleynions, Rebecca Patrick.
Sorry, I was conferring. Give me those names again.
Christopher Bennett, Christopher Kleynions, and Rebecca Patrick.
All right, is there, just for a, God, we're doing a motion within a motion. Do we need to second that, Ron? Your question really screwed us up, and part of the problem, I apologize, I was on vacation last week, so I didn't get a chance to wordsmith this motion.
I think you might be better off with two motions, one to recommend the entire pool, and then a second one to, you know, recommend your top three or whatever you've decided.
Just in this context.
To place all of them into nomination, and then recommend three.
Right.
I think I actually am going to go with that on this one, and.
Okay, because of how it's handled.
Because of how it's handled a little bit differently, and then we can review this in the future, for sure. So let's, let's call the, I don't need to do a roll call, but our, the original motion was to place all these into nomination. Would anybody care to make that?
You want me to offer my.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yours.
My comments on, okay. So the way I think it should read is to place into nomination and recommend to the board chairperson the names of, and then you've got the 12 names, and to select one to fill one Housing Commission member vacancy beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2025, and recommend our chairperson appoint the same person to serve a successive term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2030.
So moved.
So my amendment was to.
Second.
Sorry.
There we go, moved and seconded.
And so the amendment would be to amend that motion to select three candidates to fill one vacancy.
We're going to do that in part two. That'll be a second motion.
You're recommending the entire field now.
I get that we're placing a nomination recommending to the board chair in the name of these 12 folks, and then the secondary motion is to select three candidates to fill, to fill one Housing Commission member vacancy.
Correct. We'll do that in a separate motion.
We're going to do that in a separate.
Can you read your, I think I get what you're getting at, Doug. Can you read the second part?
Those two motions would be opposed, Jordan.
Yeah, they would, if I've got it. How many individuals are, did you say that we're recommending to the chairperson?
We're recommending all the names. You list all of them.
Yeah, that's part one.
And you're telling them to select one, which is true.
We're recommending or replacing an denomination, I'm sorry, because it says you're placing a nomination to recommend to the board chair in the name of.
It says names plural.
Okay, and so the names of.
And you've got 12 people listed.
And we're recommending that he select one, because ultimately he can only select one, Doug.
And then we will, in a secondary motion, recommend.
Two or three, or whatever number you want.
We have two recommendations, one is for 12, and then for three.
It's, I suppose it's the, it's the.
We just place into nomination the names of, and get rid of and recommend to the board chair, because that's, we're making two different recommendations.
I'm fine with that.
And for two different quantities of people.
Nomination.
Because the fact that we're recommending the board chairs is something new. Usually it's just place into nomination the names of, and then the secondary, and recommend to the board chairman to select.
At the end of the day, Doug, that'll get it done. If that makes you happy, I'm fine with it.
All right, I move to place into nomination the names of Joseph Alfonso, Andrew Reenstrahlers, Jack Vandermeulen, Kenneth Bruin, Christopher Bennett, Calvin Brinks, Sharon Kozak, Christopher Kleynions, Rebecca Patrick, Josh Ribbons, Nathan Slower, Orlando Estrada, and to select one to fill one Housing Commission member vacancy beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2025, and.
Recommend.
Recommending to the. Board chairperson.
To serve a successive term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2030.
That's my motion.
Would anyone care to second that?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Part two, Doug, would you like to make a motion to recommend three candidates to the chairperson?
Sure. Make a motion to recommend to the board chairman three names. In my case, Christopher Bennett, Christopher Kleynions, and Rebecca Patrick.
Is there a second?
Those don't have to be the three names. You're welcome to add names.
I think we'll.
You see what I'm saying? Yep, got it. That motion died. Since we're done with administrator, just say your names, and we'll find out which three hit most often, right?
Then I think you gotta make a different motion.
Yeah, well, that's why, my original motion was to select, to recommend three different candidates, and then we would backfill that with the actual candidates, but.
That's fine. You could make that motion. I would second.
Recommend three candidates to the chairperson. And then each person names three.
Sure.
Whoever hit the most of those three, those are the.
I would second that motion. Okay. Got it. So then the idea is that we're each naming three. You named your three. Is somebody keeping track of which three have been named? Could you? You got that, Rachel?
For Doug's?
For Doug's. You got Doug's three. All right. Allison, would you like to recommend three?
Well, I had two, so I'm going back through my notes about if I want to have a third. So my top two at this point in time are Jack Vandermeulen and Kenneth Bruin. So I will, if you need a third one for me, then I need a little bit of extra time.
The motion to up to three, and then you don't have to.
Okay, that would be the two that I want to move on then.
Doug, are you good with that? It's up to three.
Up to three, yeah. Let's hear everybody's numbers, and then we'll come up with two or three that hit most often.
Sounds good. All right, so we've got Allison's. Jordan, do you have two or three up to three names?
Yeah, I recommend, I would recommend Jack Vandermeulen, Kenneth Bruin, and Calvin Brinks.
Okay, and I like Kenneth Bruin. Going to think about this. Calvin Brinks and Christopher Bennett. All right, so who rose to the top, Rachel?
You've got a problem there.
You got a tie.
Yeah, we might have a tie. I think we got a pretty good handle. Jack came up, Andrew, Kenneth came up, and then Christopher came up. Did Calvin Brinks come twice, or no?
Yes.
Kenneth had three.
Yes.
Jack had two.
Jack has, well, came up, but you mentioned him but didn't put him as your top three, so two times for Jack. Kenneth was three, Kenneth Bruin. Calvin Brinks two.
Christopher.
Chris Bennett two.
And to be fair, we are missing one person today. And so I don't know if that matters to this commission, but that.
I've spoken with Phil, and this does not certainly have to be binding. I don't want to speak on his behalf, per se, but I know he was positive on Kenneth, I believe, and Jack as well, potentially.
The gentleman who is big on strategic planning, Calvin Brooks Brinks, I think it was.
Calvin. Yep.
Everybody likes Ken.
We recommend four. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
But Ken does have the most. I mean, if we want to pick one, we can recommend him.
Doug, it was your idea to recommend three?
Four is fine. Give John as many options as he'd like. Jack Vandermeulen, Ken Brunet, Chris Bennett, and I don't know who the fourth would be.
Calvin Brinks. Calvin Brinks.
Okay. We each have our different picks, and I think that makes a good consensus.
An absent Phil here to add more.
You're not here, you don't get to go, right?
That's right, we go with four. Okay, and then obviously John can select from those four.
He can pick.
He can select, he can either pick somebody else, not even of those four, if you wanted to. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second, and we've got four names. Ron, are we able to vote on this at this point? All right, do we need a roll call?
No.
Nope. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for sorting through that. Now that this is a new thing, and next time we'll get it a little bit better, more smoothly. Next item on the agenda, number two, appointments to boards and commissions policy review. I'm not going to put a suggested motion out there just yet until we discuss this a little bit and come up with exactly what the motion's going to be. Fair enough, and there were some suggestions from Allison.
I believe this is Allison's proposal.
Yep.
If I understand the.
Were the word changes, so you're staying?
Actually, that, that would appear under, under my issues page number two. A, two A.
Yep, I just made a couple minor changes and thoughts that I thought would properly align us better with wording. So I just added the very first subject line, subject to state statutes, and then added, changed the word shall to should, because shall is pretty fi, pretty final in the words of the legal world, so protects us a little bit with that.
Hey, Josh, real quick. So at first I thought you were changing the motion that was in the agenda. Nobody moved to go into discussion yet, so are you able to?
I'm going with, we're going to discuss it a little bit first, and then we'll make a motion based on what gets fleshed out.
Okay.
Is that going to work for you, or need us to make a motion first?
Well, the motion that's listed here is something different than what you guys are actually discussing. Is that correct? So you're not going into discussion currently?
So I'm making motion for approved and forward policy recommendations on the appointments to boards and commissions policy to the planning and policy committee, so that we have something to talk about.
Second, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Got it. Now, back to Allison.
Anyway, I just made a couple of minor things, and changed shall a couple of times to should. I think someone else had caught the pass name of talent recruitment, to the change name of appointment alignment, or maybe I did, I'm not sure. And then looks like someone made the thought change of every four years instead of every two years. Probably my guess is due to our term being changed by the state to a four-year term versus a two-year term. And then there is one item that came up earlier today, actually during this meeting, and I'm wondering if we want to address it at the same time. It talked about if someone doesn't show up for an interview, is that something that we want to tackle right now while we're looking at the policy?
We can look at the red line, and I'll definitely be willing to jump into that with you.
We go through the red lines. Just would love to see if we've got general consensus on all of them, maybe one at a time. So the first one, under policy, does everybody have the paper from there? Okay, all right. The first addition is the subject to state statutes. Does that work for everybody?
I'm sorry, what?
The first change in, under policy, is the words, adding the word subject to state statutes. Does that work for everyone?
I mean, I don't have a problem with state statutes. I think it's slightly superfluous, but it's fine that it's there. I mean, obviously, everything we do hopefully is according to state statute, driving here, or whatever we do, we don't want to break laws. But I, maybe the sentence itself that it's supporting, it says, "The Board of Commissioners will review all applications for positions on boards and commissions, the membership of which is appointed by the board." Maybe we can strengthen. My recommendation is maybe to say, "We'll review all applications for appointments to boards and commissions, and carry out these appointments subject to state statute." Because right now, state statutes is only referring to will review, and it's not talking about the actual appointment process. It's assuming there's appointment process, but if you want to say that we're doing this according to state statutes, both the reviewing and the appointment should be according to state statute. Does that make sense, Allison, or no?
I thought Allison was focusing on the Housing Commission change.
Well, there's a CAA, I mean, the will review, I mean, the state statute doesn't specify how we review applications. So generally speaking, if you say, "We're going to review all applications according to state statute," well, there is no state statute that says Board of Commissioners are going to review applications in such a manner. We have freedom to do that as we wish, right? So there's no specific state statute other than CAA, right?
I suppose I would interpret it as, for reviewing applications subject to state statutes, it also applies to, not necessarily how we're reviewing, but what we are reviewing in terms of eligibility for certain positions and certain boards. I'm comfortable with how it is as written.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to maybe put a little point of emphasis. If we're going to add in state statutes, that we're also carrying out those appointments also according to state statute, which it doesn't, as written, doesn't really specify, right? It's an assumption that we're doing it, but if you're adding in this clause subject to state statute, both the reviewing and the appointments.
I agree. I mean, I think what you said, it is slightly superfluous, because it all is enforceable by the state statute anyways.
So I don't have a problem either way. I just offered that suggestion that we kind of strengthen, strengthen that first sentence, is make sure that the reviewing and the appointment is subject to state statute, if we're going to have that phrase there. Does that make sense, Ron?
Allison, do you have some?
If it's not important, it's not important, but it seemed important enough to add subject to the statute.
I'm guessing, because I haven't talked to Allison specifically about her thinking on this, but I thought this was to make it clear that there are instances, like the Housing Commission, where the Board of Commissioners has no role at all.
Yes, but again, state statute doesn't prescribe reviewing for any board except for CAA. It does not say how you review applications. We've chosen this route over the last two, three weeks to review applications in a certain way, just as we chose a route to review applications for the original board, but state statute doesn't say how those applications get.
That's true. You're setting board policy as opposed to.
And there is no state statute that specifically says, "You shall review in this way." And that's why I think it's a little bit superfluous, but it's fine that it's there. But the appointment process, if you're talking about the statutory Housing Commission, or you're talking about CAA, then there are statutes.
Would, would it work better for you, Doug, if I'm following now? I'm going to read this out. I'm gonna read this out, um, and hold on to Allison's line, subject to state statutes. So the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners will review all applications for positions on boards and commissions, the membership of which is appointed subject to state statutes by the board.
That's basically what I said, just with a few more words, but.
I, I'm just using what's there and taking subject to state statutes and putting it on the end, but, and tying it to the.
I think we're getting into the grammatical weeds here, because I, I, the way I would read it is it says subject to state statutes, the commission reviews all applications, the membership of which is appointed by the board, so it's only reviewing applications which are under its purview to appoint subject to state statutes. I mean, you could move that prepositional phrase or that whatever dependent clause earlier in the sentence, and it would apply.
Okay, fair enough, as long as we understand that the pointing and reviewing are subject to state statute.
Actually, I think you make a real good point. Really don't have to change this at all.
I don't think it needs to be changed.
It really is limited to those specific instances when the board makes the appointment.
Okay.
Okay, now, so we're changing it to what Allison has drafted, and that is?
No, we're, we're not changing it at all.
Okay, so getting rid of subject to state statutes altogether, is that what you're recommending, Ron?
Yep.
Because we're already doing that.
Well, this, this phrase under policy, in and of itself, by its own language, is limited to only those instances where, uh, the board makes an appointment.
Correct.
You know, the obvious exclusion is Housing Commission.
Right, yep.
So I think we're okay just leaving it alone.
Okay.
Oh, you can go either way.
I, I think one reason why maybe it had come up is simply because with a lot of turnover on boards or administration or people who are working with it, it's just bringing it back to the forefront of that understanding um, and not taking for granted that people automatically know it, but I have no problem having it or not having it. It's not gonna make too much of a difference in the long run.
Is a, uh, way to address your concerns, Allison, and I know I'm gonna muddy the water a little bit more before it gets clear. To reference Rule 2.3 of our Board Rules, I've made a copy for you guys, there you go. Ron, I got one for you, too.
Okay.
Rule, Rule 2.3 basically just says how we make these appointments, which states according to state statute in that.
And it'd say, if, if, as, what, as outlined in.
As outlined in Board Rules 2.3. That's how we're making our recommendations in accordance with.
Well, there's, there's a bit of a difference. Obviously, 2.3 is talking about the chairpersons' beginning of the year assignments, not boards and commissions that we appoint to.
Yeah, I agree with that, actually.
Gotcha, okay.
I, I'm fine with the subject state statute, because hopefully everything we do is subject state statute, we're not willingly breaking the rules.
I think it's great with the changes written, just leaving subject to state statutes at the beginning of the sentence. I think that's good enough.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I like it as well. Allison, we know you like it because you wrote it. How about that? And then the next proposed change was the word should. Do we want to leave that one, too? If possible, the membership of all boards and commissions should be determined prior to the expiration of the term. Hold on, Doug. Allison initiated, I'm gonna give her the chance to pitch that out there.
I was just, there's always, um, exceptions to the rule of what happens, that sometimes you do not appoint somebody prior to the expiration of a term. And so I was just trying to get a little bit more, um, yes, it should, it should be the case, but there are cases where it will not happen, and so I was trying to eliminate the shall, um, which I've come to realize is a very strong legal term. All right.
Doug?
So I, I, I see what you're saying. I, I think there's if possible there. I mean, you could, you could rephrase that as like whenever feasible. But it, oh, we already, we're already giving ourselves a lot of leeway, and maybe we need to give ourselves more leeway. Maybe we need to deal with that side and make sure that we're actually doing it by giving ourselves less leeway, right? I mean, the if possible or whenever feasible should stay, because I do think we need some leeway, but, you know, for Michelle, this doesn't really bother me, but it seems like hey, you guys can kind of do what you want, these are vague recommendations without like stipulating, get that thing done before the terms are over.
Thanks, Doug. Jordan, thoughts?
I, I agree. I think if possible, gives us enough out, but I actually think keeping it stronger keeps more pressure on this committee and on the board to appoint them, because if it's just should, you know, if possible, we should do that. Well, we should do a lot of things. But if possible, we shall, you know, i- if, if there are extenuating circumstances, we could say, well, it wasn't possible. But that's, that's my thought. I, I think we can leave.
My only concern is, is there anything that if our board did not appoint somebody by the expiration of a term, does it bring us into any form of a legal concern?
And I'll share my thoughts, then we'll punt that question to Ron. I appreciated the word should, but as I read that sentence again with the words, phrase, if possible, at the beginning of it, I too felt that we've given ourselves enough out, that if possible, covers the shall with basically changing it to a should. As long as we're legally okay with the if possible, we shall, I'm okay with leaving that.
I think you are. Shall is a mandatory term legally. Uh, if possible, is wiggle room. See, you've got them both in one phrase, but I think it works okay.
Without adding a second should, okay, the if possible covers.
I think so.
Gives us the wiggle room that we need, because as Allison pointed out, reality is, we're not always gonna be able to do that.
I have a feeling.
Who gets to determine if possible?
All depends on how much in the weed you want to get. We can put a couple paragraphs in there to, my, my guess is that Greg Rappley or one of the Corporation Council people wrote this, probably taking into account some of the vagaries of, uh, the various statutes that govern or enable the boards and commissions, and tried to build in some wiggle room.
If you don't have any concerns, um, for the protection of the county, then I have no problem of keeping it how it, how it is. It was only the, the.
I, I, I appreciate that, because, you know, the last thing that we want is for an open appointment to turn into a legal issue. So I would defer as well, but I think we're probably good.
Sounds good, so we'll get general consensus to leave that one for now. Uh, the next change, if I flip that over, is more on the procedure side, um, but it is, is it the changing it from, uh?
Talent and recruitment.
Talent and recruitment to appointment alignment. I believe we're probably all in consensus on that one. That's item C under procedure. And then what was the next one that was proposed, and then we'll get to your.
There's a.
Comment, Doug?
Shall or should.
That Allison had suggested, where is that? Sorry, I don't have the red letter edition.
Procedure subsection C, about halfway through the paragraph.
Oh, there's the should right there? So item C, I'll just read that sentence aloud. The name, uh, was about fourth sentence down, "The names of all applicants and committee recommendations, if any, should be submitted to the Board of Commissioners instead of shall be submitted to the Board of Commissioners."
Again, it's just the same thought process, so if a change isn't needed to protect the county, then I'm fine with keeping it, but.
Doug?
I'm in favor of keeping the shall, because we got two shales in that same sentence, so it seems kind of odd that we would soften the submission but harden the appointments. You can't really make an appointment without submission, so if we have two shales, that makes sense. If we have two shoulds, might make sense, but keeping both shells makes sense.
It sounds like a tongue twister, by the way. It's kind of fun. Jordan, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, similar thoughts, I think. Yeah, I, I, I guess I, I think I actually like should a little bit more in this context. Because there may be circumstances. I guess there's, I, I, I guess not. I guess it could go either way. I'm just thinking, we, we just had a long discussion about which names we were going to actually move forward, and if we do change, this says we will. We should submit the names of all applicants and committee recommendations. But we may not want to do that in the future.
And maybe that kind of, we should have that discussion about who gets placed in the nomination, because I frankly think that if you apply, you should be placed in nomination, whether.
Nope, I, I got you, but hold on a minute. I don't want to, from a legal standpoint, Ron, do you have an opinion on whether we're okay with the should or the shall, which is a preferential?
I was kind of leaning towards a should in that one, uh, partly because you understand that the chairperson could ignore this entire procedure and just pick somebody.
Right.
To be on the Housing Commission. And so you would not be nominating, you would not be recommending, you would be merely telling the chairpersons to perform his or her duty.
I think we could even say may.
Well, one thing to take in consideration, if what I heard just a couple minutes ago is, I certainly wouldn't hope that this team is thinking it's going to start making decisions on behalf of the entire board for all of our appointments. I was doing it more thinking for the case in point with like the Housing Commission, for example, and protecting that terms, not taking away the responsibility for the whole board to weigh in on who they want to vote for.
Yeah, I don't think we're changing that at all.
Completely agree.
I agree with you.
I completely agree with you. I, but I'm saying in the, I think we're, we agree in the, in those circumstances where it does not statutorily have to go to the full board.
Yep.
Then there's not really a need to spell out that that we have to give of the full list of names necessarily. We might change that in the future.
Okay, and I'm, I'm fine with should as well, kind of based on Allison, everybody's input and Ron, so that, that moves that one through. What was the next?
Next item on that one?
I don't think there is.
Oh, number four.
View period over at the very end. Last page.
Oh, last page.
Which, of course, I don't have on mine.
What item is that? It just changes it from. Okay, yeah, everybody.
Yep.
Okay.
And it was due to the state changing our term.
Terms to four years, okay. Okay, so I think we're, gosh, we're good on this. So could we get a, we need to make a motion now, official motion, or amend the motion, to make these recommendations to the Planning and Policy Committee for adoption.
Unless you still want to have the, we still have to, could we just leave this in draft form and have that discussion? And then also have the discussion on, um, discussion item three, before we finish this draft up, because that was not part of this draft, neither is the discussion on who should be presented to the board.
Sorry, you lost me, Doug.
All right, so we have a pending discussion on, um, the idea of who should be nominated, placed into nomination, right?
Are you talking, like when we were talking about if someone weren't to show up, for example, ineligible applicants? What deems somebody ineligible?
Right.
And if it should be recorded that way?
Right, and then we, we have as discussion item three, uh, something that refers to, um, section four, part A, about the four months and the nine months.
Got it. I hear you. Um, I want to make sure that we get what we've all universally agreed on through.
Well, I think this draft is fine, but it's in the lead, right? I mean, we haven't finished those two discussions.
Let me go down that road for a minute. Where in this draft, then, do we need to make a change? Or tweak the wording so that it addresses the, uh, inter- interviewees or applicants who are absent from interviews, being eligible or ineligible? What item does that fit in?
That would be I, then, if we wanted to do that, right?
Adding one.
Or find a place to amend.
Okay, so your, your proposal then is to add.
That's not my proposal. I think that's Commissioner Mead's proposal.
Discussion as a part of this, we are discussing these rules, I'm fine with that.
Sounds good. So then the Allison, the idea is an item addition of an item I that spells out if an applicant is absent from interviews, how we handle that situation.
Yeah, it actually might fit well under item C, under committee review and board action.
Or B, application.
Or. Yeah, possibly. Whether or not we want to have some of them, because there have been issues that I've noticed over the last couple of years, that if someone submits, um, their information forward and everyone else has shown up, taken the time to go through an interview process, to me, that bears weight on, um, the caliber of what you're hoping for, and there can be countless circumstances, right, that has someone not show up. But for me to make a recommendation, like, I would want to know the information, so if I wasn't part of the interview committee, and I was on the rest of the board, to know that someone didn't come for an interview, but at the same time with protecting the, um, being respectful to that individual, because it can be for many reasons. Just having a little star that just said, um, ineligible, I don't know that that needs to be stated why they can apply again, but I don't know why we would
So.
Grant them a consideration if they don't go through the whole process.
I think that's totally fair concern. I mean, like you said, there are reasons people can may have to miss. I mean, we do have a fairly tight timeline for interviewing people in, in a lot of cases. But for instance, Orlando, he didn't do our interview process, but he did come, in fairness, he did come to the board and talked about that he applied, not the same as us being able to ask him questions in a, you know, kind of private setting, but he did come. I mean, in that sense, he did make an effort, so I, I think the way I envision it is when you get the application materials, a lot of times, we have the, the little, um, spread, the little spreadsheet that has it has X's by whether or not, you know, they filled out a complete application, whether they submitted their resume. Easy, be easy to add, you know, in-person interview, put a checkbox there. And whether that material is included, I, I, I think you could include that in the packet.
Doug, I'll pop you for a minute, and then I'm, yeah, go ahead.
That's a question of.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
So would you say, under C, the names of all interviewed applicants should be submitted to the Board of Commissioners? Is that how you would change that? Because right now, we have the names of all applicants should be submitted to the board.
No, I think, I think for full transparency, I think that they should be made aware of every single person that applied.
Okay.
And sometimes what will happen is someone is ineligible.
But then if they're ineligible, then we can't submit them, because they're not eligible, just like you live in Manistee County, you're not eligible, so we can't pass your recommended, we can't pass your name on, right? In order to be, in order for us to pass your name on, you would have to be eligible.
Well, for example, there have been cases of individuals. Sorry, I'm thinking about something that.
I mean, there, we do spell out residency in second E here. I don't think if they live in Manistee, even potentially at the time of applying, but they're moving. I, I just think there's cases where we don't necessarily need to spell out eligibility, because they're all being reviewed anyways. And in most cases, besides board appointment cases or, or chairperson appointment cases, we are making recommendations and that will go to the full board. I get what you're saying in terms of having some standards of eligibility, but to me, this almost seems kind of like the background check issue, where it's, you know, is the juice really worth the squeeze? And are we potentially dissuading people from applying when they, they might actually be eligible, but.
So I'm not sure what you're advocating for.
I don't think we need to have a eligibility section.
I agree with you.
I think it's fine.
Then I agree with you. I'm sorry, I didn't quite realize which.
Yeah, I, I think it's fine sending the full list, and, and I'm, I'm fine marking, even including, you know, did they do an in-person? even including, you know, did they do an in-person interview? Are they a resident of the county? I think we can make all of that stuff.
I, I think the problem in the past has been if an applicant applies and for some reason the invitation to interview goes to their spam and all of a sudden they pull up an agenda and they see a star next to their name, they did an interview and they're like, wait, I, I didn't get a chance to interview. And that's kind of on us or on, you know, email filter, right? But we've already kind of put an X next to them saying they did an interview when it may not be their fault, right? And I don't, I haven't spoken to Orlando about, you know, his, his case, but it could be a spam filter issue, right? We've put an X next to their name over something that they have no control over.
And I'm not suggesting an X necessarily, I'm, I'm thinking of something like we have there, did they submit, you know, application? Because yeah, there could be issues with them sending their resume from formatting issues. You just never know, you can't plan for every contingency, but I don't think it's a problem to
It's not.
Give the board the information.
It's not an issue about that person. It's actually just so that the board is aware of, you didn't get all the information that you might have been able to and they're able to apply again, but at this point in time, they're not eligible to be considered, because.
I mean, hold on that a minute, let me go to Ron.
Just two comments, I noticed that this policy is dated 2013. When I applied to the building authority, I was never called in for an interview. That may be the practice in some instances, I don't know. That's one comment, the second one is in the case of Mr. Estrada, I know that Regina made some additional efforts to get ahold of him and have him show for an interview. I think you had a couple of follow-ups, did you?
Yeah. Yeah, and it was the same case that we had with prior years with other applicants that didn't show up. It was multiple ways of communication, so again, it's not trying to, anyway, it, it's fine if, if the consensus is that this committee wants to just keep them all in as one and they're all being considered, that the whole board, that maybe that doesn't matter to them, that they know whether or not they were interviewed, then that's.
I, I think you bring up a good point, I'll second Jordan, everybody's commented on it from different aspects. Part, it seems to me that part one is answering the question by agreement from the board. If someone misses an interview, are they still eligible? And, or are they not? That's where the word ineligible comes in. If the answer is they're still eligible, which I would argue they are, but we could vote on that if we wanted to. Then I agree as well with Allison's comment that it would be good to know and, and it's just a matter of figuring out how to communicate that to the rest of the board that, hey, they were unavailable for the interview, or we were unable to interview them or something to that effect. I don't believe that should disqualify someone, but it, it's absolutely agree with you 100% Allison and Jordan that it's worth noting that they were not able to, so we weren't able to do it. Yeah, and Doug, I think you're, I, I get it with the mark, it's like the scarlet letter or something like that.
Well, that's, I mean, we are, we are setting this candidate off.
Yeah.
And there may be different reasons why we were not able to do that interview. I think at the end of the day, like Jordan says, if they didn't interview, the likelihood of them getting a recommendation is very low, right? Unless there's just one candidate, and so probably, at the end of the day, you know, that's probably not going to happen regardless, so the idea of segmenting somebody off is, I think, the end cost benefit doesn't make sense to me.
What, so toward the making note of them not being able to interview, just take that as one item. Is there a way for us to pass that information onto the full board when we pass our recommendations without, I mean, behind the scenes in the packet? Going back to Jordan's checklist, submitted application, had interview, whatever.
I, I'm comfortable with you sending an email on behalf of this board saying, you know, we have 12 names in, in nomination, just a note, right? If you wish to do that, but to have that at least get noted.
Come from staff too.
And, okay, Allison, does that work for you? I mean, that's.
Email?
The idea is sure, a communication saying, a note on the, you know, recommendations that we've made for appointments, so-and-so was unavailable for interview.
Possibly, you might have more questions if you're doing it that way, but should be fine.
Okay.
Just from individual commissioners, but.
What else have we got on this? Is there, that was one of two.
It was one of two, and I appreciate that discussion, I really do, and I know we discuss this, it may be different in the past as well as different today. But the idea of this is discussion item three, 2026 seat vacancies and interview time slots. I don't know who put this together, but this is super. It really kind of lets us know what's going to happen this year. And for the same reason, I think that that should kind of be in our policy as well. I think this probably took a little bit to put together, but you only have to do it once per year, basically. Especially because, well, many mental health maybe meets in March, but maybe for the most part, a lot of our boards finish at the end of the year. But helps us to understand what we need to do the rest of the year. And to have that as part of our policy, to me, makes sense.
So where would you be proposing that we add that to?
So that would be in four, A, a list of opening positions will expand to include all appointments that expire four months prior, what was the language Ron that I sent you?
Notice of open positions contain two different lists, both updated monthly. All appointments expiring within nine months would be one, and the other one would be, well, your wording is our existing list with currently open positions, including all appointments expiring within four months.
Right.
So two different lists.
The two different lists.
Do you have that in front of us again, or was it only on email? It'd be really nice to be able to look at it again. What you printed?
Yeah, it's crossed out, but it's look under.
For the language.
So they added it in?
I think. Okay, so section four A, that's the first one.
This way, right.
Doug, your, your proposal is to add, for those who don't have this in front of them, under section four A, notice of open positions, would have two different lists, A, bullet point A, all appointments expiring within nine months, and B.
List of open positions.
Currently open positions, including all appointments that expire within four months.
Is there a reason why this isn't included on our current motion?
It goes moved to discussion item, not quite sure what has moved to discussion item.
Yeah, I guess if we're looking at
That's why.
Improving our policy, why are we not having this as part of our?
I think we're discussing it.
Yeah, no, originally in my conversations with Regina, we were discussing what was policy and what was procedure. And this seemed to fall more under the procedure. As I'm looking through this now and understanding better, this whole thing is kind of some, a document that we all work on and approve, so bringing it up and discussing it now is absolutely fine.
Yeah, because within our policy, it goes through the entire procedure. So I think Doug's comments are very valuable in having underneath procedure if we're going to make any recommendations of changes.
Yeah, and Doug suggested we pull it up and include it in the discussions, that's why we're doing it. I'm 100% on that.
Okay.
I think it's, I mean, having that information is great, if, if nothing else, it gives us an opportunity every time we meet to let people know what's going to be.
Right.
Available.
That was a thought, simply it's just like, hey, I mean, for the most part, you can just copy and paste this, but there'll become, you know, add this as we go through, but kind of keeps us on two different time horizons. The short-term horizon and kind of the longer-term horizon.
Yep, I very much agree, it's a couple of the items we were hoping to have within the last couple of years, so if, if there's no reason from staff that have concerns with addressing this within our policy with procedure, I would appreciate supporting.
Yeah, that's right, and I want to bump over to Regina, and I know that you've got an internal policy group that's going to meet to kind of review these from a staff perspective and a carrying this out, yeah, do you have some concerns?
Back on procedural changes that you were suggesting, because we also have some internal ones that need to be done as well. So our internal policy review team will be meeting August 20th, I believe. And this is on the list, as Rachel and I've talked. This is kind of like two parts coming into one. So I think, I'm hearing what you're saying, I would like the opportunity to make some changes, some proposed edits, and then you'll get this back at planning and policy for.
Sounds great, yeah.
I'm, I've no problem with that.
So the idea would, sure, so we could make our recommendations to planning and policy based on the discussion we've just had, including that. And then at the same time, staff will have an opportunity to take a look and we'll bring both documents to planning and policy. Okay, okay, yeah. I'm fine with that, it makes sense to you Allison and Jordan?
Yeah, as long as we're, yes, I think what I just heard, so that we all tackle it together at the same time versus being it in little chunks here and there, be great.
And ultimately, because this is going to planning and policy, that's going to put both ships together into one. And we're going to do it all over again, okay, excellent. Ah, well, we don't have to go into all the details, hopefully not.
So Regina, just to follow up, and I'm not sure if this is the right place, but you wanted to change the rules of clerk and administration as far as doing this, right? Okay, so we'll see that in planning, okay, coming from the staff side, okay, okay.
So do you have all of the changes that we have agreed on? Someone have that marked down, because I think we took all of them as written besides one.
I do not, but we should make.
I think we did everything, but the first should, the second should stayed, the appointment alignment stayed, the four-year stayed, and if we're in agreement going, having two different lists, then that needs to be added into four A.
I thought we were waiting on that one.
Sorry, what?
Were we waiting on that one?
No, but she's going to draw it up and then bring it back to planning.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we can pass this as a recommendation to staff and then those staff will write this up and then give it to planning, was that the idea? With any, with any ideas that you all had, right?
Wait a minute, Doug, you just said the staff, and the motion on the table right now is to make these recommendations to the planning and policy committee. Okay.
So you're saying do not include the two lists here, so you guys can discuss it before it goes to planning policy. I'm fine with that, because if it's not how we like it in planning and policy, we can change it then, that's, I think that's great.
All right, fully commit to you to see what that looks like.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Goes back to being on the discussion item rather than on the action item, ha ha, we came full circle. Okay, so then we've got a motion to make these changes as outlined by Doug here just a minute ago, who was keeping notes. Is everybody comfortable with those?
You kept the subject to state statutes.
That stayed.
Right, okay.
Subject to state statute stayed.
The first should is eliminated.
First should's eliminated, and then on.
Appointment and alignment.
Is kept.
Kept, the second should is kept, and then the four-year term is kept.
Yep, all right, so we should take a vote on that, Rachel, are we good with that? And can we take a vote on that?
Just to clarify the, what are the next steps? We're, go ahead.
I will draft up what I'm hearing. Rachel and I have some changes obviously to make as far as administration and third functions. And then that will go to the internal policy review team on August 20.
Okay, and then where, where do we see the discussion of the two different lists? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you, apologies Regina, I was refreshed as to why we did that the way we did, so that helped out. Update from staff, I believe, is next.
I had two additional matters that I don't think we've discussed yet. Three additional matters. The first on my issues page would be one B. I know that Commissioner Zylstra is planning to have, I think, a meeting soon on the future composition or the future nature, I should say, of the housing commission. And I believe that's coming up next week.
Correct, yes. At the, at this point, for Jordan and Allison and anyone else, Doug had mentioned, and I underscore the validity of it, the possibility of changing the shape of the housing commission and maybe pulling it out from under state statute, but creating it as an advisory committee to the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners. And there are a lot of questions surrounding that, and so the initial idea was for Doug and I to sit down with you, Ron, and, you know, legal counsel or whomever you think would be there and discuss that and what it might take shape, and then we would report back to this full board on what we came up with. So that, we've tentatively got August 21, I think it's a Thursday morning next week to sit down and discuss that.
Good, the other two issues I had, these were, I think, emails or conversations with, I know Phil Kires was one of the individuals, I can't recall the other right now, but it, it had to do with commissioners being on two different committees, one is the Parks and Rec Committee or Commission, and the second is Community Mental Health Board. I think the first question was, do you need to have two commissioners on parks? And taking the language from the bio, I'll say the answer is no, you need to have one, you can't have two.
Okay.
You can or you can't?
Can.
Can.
You can have either one or two, but you don't have to have two, currently it looks like we have one. On it, so you could add another commissioner, but that's, that would be up to the board. The second one on community mental health, the question was, do we have to have three commissioners on it, as I recall? And the answer to that one is statutory, not more than four members of a board, maybe county commissioners, so therefore there's no requirement of any county commissioners on there. So that's discretionary, obviously, with the board again. They're on the last, the second side of this page, so I think those were the answers that were being sought. But I, I thought I'd just bring them to your attention, so you know what the discussion might be in the future.
And I'm cross-referencing that with the spreadsheet of appointments that we have coming up. Does that impact the appointments that we'll be making recommendations for?
Well, from my perspective on that Parks one, if you choose that you want to have another commissioner on there, then one of that, those public seats would be affected.
Yep, so that would come into play there, and then is community mental health on here? It's got to be.
It is, well, it's on my sheet, at least this one, I think you all have.
I don't think it is. Yeah. Six.
Oh.
How does that go again? I'm very, what you said, sorry.
Yeah, M H.
March 31st, April 1 vacancy.
I believe, yeah, at least Sylvia's and may, maybe Kendra's also would expire next.
Yeah, we went through that, there'll be four openings every year. Yes, and I believe two of those openings are commissioners at this point, seat, based on the recalibration that Linnea did and you guys did previously, we'll have to take a look at it, but.
There was things that had been done wrong for a very long time at the county with how the seats were done, yep.
That's sort of, so, but to your point, that's not on our, we don't have to deal with that right now, because. That's sort of, so, but to your point, that's not on our, we don't have to deal with that right now because those expire and, excuse me, those will be renewing or appointed in April. So that'll be next year.
Okay.
Okay. Ron, what else?
Oh, just a quick question on this list. And how do we want to think about the airport authority? Do we want to think about that on Ron's list or on this list?
Well, I, I don't have it on my list, but I recall that the airport authority, uh, situation is unique in that our county is permitted to have one non-voting member.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I believe we have one that has a term that will expire, I believe, the end of the year.
Yeah, it's only a one-year term.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, so it expires at the end of the year. Um, in 2024, that position went through talent recruitment. Prior to that, it was done as a, on, on, on your sheet as beginning of the year, commis-, um, uh, board chair appointment.
That'll have that sheet in front of me, but that could very well be true.
Yep, that should be something that we have a conversation with sooner than later.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not over having that conversation now. I mean, because if it's going to show on this list, then it should show on this list as soon as possible. If it's going to show on that list
Mm-hmm.
As a, as a chair appointee.
I'm assuming the issue is that it's mostly been a county commissioner.
It's mostly been a county commissioner. I was on, I think we've had mostly a county commissioner.
Question that, um, the proposal is to go back to a county commissioner.
But there is no stipulation that it, it can be anybody. So that's why I think in 2024, and Allison, help me out here, that's why it was on this sheet as a talent recruitment appointment and not as a, as a
Agreed.
Chair, because it could, it could be
It got appointed through the typical process of talent recruitment, but you're right. If we go back to a commissioner, one, that's why it wouldn't show up on here.
Okay, that's interesting. So the, the conversation, Ron, you and I had with the airport authority was that the authority to accept, to request someone from Ottawa County, it's up to them. They don't even have to request one of us, an appointment from the county.
I believe their bylaws provide that the county on its own can have one non-voting member.
Okay.
That doesn't require the, the airport authority to approve. Um, the alternative is if the county kicks in some money, whatever that might be, the county can have, I think, two voting members. But we have not done that, nor has Alleghen County, I don't think.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And you and I had some discussion that with the appointment, being a commissioner or not a non-commissioner, um, that the airport authority could indicate to us their preference. Is that true or not true?
Probably true, but ultimately it's our decision.
Ultimately, we get to, okay.
But again, who, who we were conversing with, right? Like, so when you say the airport authority, it was that collectively?
Oh, no, absolutely not. What?
It was one thing that I think we have to have a conversation about, whether it's now or later, because the reason why, I think there's, um, reasons to highly consider putting back a commissioner on there as well as there are strong reasons to understand why a pilot was put in there. And so hearing from feedback, one of that, um, authority, like, um, for example, Jim Story, but also taking into consideration, um, anyone who has, um, things to gain or lose from, um, losing different perspectives or expertise on that, on that authority, right? So, uh, again, I'm hearing that maybe there's the direction that we want to go back to the commissioner seat on it. I just haven't had enough opportunity to listen to more commissioners' thoughts on that and we haven't had that discussion.
Yeah, no, I think you're valid, Allison. And what I'm reflecting on is I thought that we, as the Appointment and Alignment Committee, had the authority to make that determination. It sounds like though, that that's not our authority. That's got to go up to the full board to decide which option they want to go with.
Because
Where all of those items would be discussed, the pros and cons of them.
Well, either way, it would go to a vote of the full board.
So would we then make a recommendation to the board that we appoint a commissioner? Or that we appointed?
In the past, that this particular authority was appointed by the chair, but then it was one of those that was subject to our, our consensus that we were like, yeah, that sounds good. So ultimately John will appoint somebody and he's going to probably need to get a little bit of feedback from us of
It might be like
Do you approve?
Kind of thing?
Yes.
Because that process went so smoothly today. Okay.
I don't have my notes on that file. I mean, I can get it if you like, but I don't have it
Well, no, I think let's
The process works.
We could ask Phil to put it on planning and policy for a discussion to see if people have thoughts. Cause I'm, I agree if, if we're going to do another member of the public or a pilot or whatever it is, we need to get it on the list stat, but
Yeah.
I think it makes great sense having a commissioner as well, so.
Let's, I, I guess the idea would be, Ron, you and I sit down and maybe connect with Phil, to your point, and make a decision whether or not we're going to put this on our agenda for appointment alignment for next month to actually nail it down, or we're going to refer it to planning and policy. It sounds like you guys are okay with either or.
I definitely want to have that conversation. I actually even think there could be valid conversation to be had at some point in time about how much cost it would have to the county to have two paid voting members, because that is also an item that came up when Jim and I went and sat down with Jim at the airport. That was a conversation that came up. And I think, um, that could be some maybe work that's done in the background of preparing the information about here's reasons why we maybe haven't up to this point. Here's maybe some things to take in consideration of why you may want to consider having two voting members. I do think it's an area of, um, our county that is becoming, um, a bigger need. And there are a lot of things that they've been working through. And so that it may bear merit to have that consideration brought forward. So I don't know if that's something that you'd be interested in or being willing to take on, Ron, to present to us, but I think that would be conducive.
Yeah, there, there, uh, is an agreement between Park Township, uh, Zeeland and Holland that I believe spells out a formula on how you, uh, need to invest to have a voting membership. And, uh, you know, I've got that in my other file that I don't have here. But, you know, how that translates into, you know, $20, $26, for example, I don't know. I'd have to take a good look at that.
Yeah. I think that our purview as Appointment Alignment Committee is to make the appointments as requested by others. And so if the appointment is going to be, that request is going to change for whatever reason mentioned here, we need to definitely send that to the policy committee for a recommendation. So let's kick this up to Phil. That's good with you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then Ron, you can bring that information, as Allison pointed out, to that committee meeting, if you're still here. You still going to be here? Whoa, whoa, I know, I'm sorry, that was bad.
It's not going in.
All right, so the last, that's kind of update from staff. It did flow into seat vacancies and interview time slots. Regina, do you have any, uh, thing to add on the seat, the interviews? Um, you and I had talked about potentially throwing out a couple of weeks in November or whenever it is, so that we could set a, start to set aside some time. Do you have any further thoughts on that or?
Oh, but you're going to need a large chunk of time to do interviews, yeah.
Yeah. Allison, if you're, you did this most recently, and I know Doug's done it before, but with this many openings and let's say 10 people apply to each one, we're doing over a hundred interviews.
I could look at my notes.
Wondering how much time it took.
But I don't have the information for you right off. I have my this year calendar, I don't have my last year calendar, I'm still a paper pencil person.
Yeah.
Um, but I'd be happy to look at that, because I think we started even before, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we started before November, um, at least with some of our interviews, because that way, if there were certain seats that we weren't getting, then we had an opportunity to repost. Um, so I think it was maybe the end of October, but
Okay, now that's fair.
I could, and then you needed obviously 30 days to post prior to that.
And Regina, you've done this before. So it sounds like we need to post these. Okay, okay. And then yes, we should start doing interviews in October.
Yes.
What I just, if I'm picking up what you're laying down. Okay.
Yep.
Can you, um, I see, we're in August, September, October. I guess we don't need to do it right now, but at some point you're going to need to send out a doodle poll to try to lock in some interview dates. Yeah. Cut back if we don't. Okay. Thanksgiving at the county. No, Halloween at the county. Anything else? Hmm, guess right back to public comment. So, uh, if there's anybody from the public, we have one member still sticking with us. No comments? All right, um, well, we are adjourned.